Do the pledge first.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to seal the non-public minutes. Do I have a second?
So I would second with a friendly amendment to release those parts of the non-public minutes that pertain to bookkeeper items for compensation. But otherwise, I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Katie say aye?
She's not on yet.
She's not on? Okay, what I'll do is then I'll open up the public hearing to take public input on the $257,000. Nancy, am I supposed to have that? I thought it was. Okay, per RSA 9182B to CACIP, accept unanticipated funds in the amount of $257,955.29 from the state of New Hampshire. This is the first payment under the American Relief Act. Do I have a second?
So I would recommend we open up the floor since it's a public hearing first, but this sounds like our reimbursement, right, against this, these grants?
This is the first half of the American Recovery Act of $515,000 that Janet Stevens helped us receive.
So this is a, it's a in the plus column type situation. We're getting money that we can accept and then we can decide down the road where to put it because we really should be kind of repaying stuff that we didn't anticipate having to spend money on. But we're required, I think, under the grant, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, we're required to have a public hearing so that people can get up and ask any questions or tell us we're crazy for accepting all this money or, I don't know who those people would be, but.
I can go a little further on this. What it is, is we get this first check and next year we'll be getting another check in approximately the same amount. Now, we have until 2024 to turn around and figure out how we're going to use the money. And then we have until 2026 to spend the money. But we have to spend it on whatever they say we can spend it on. We have to watch what we spend it on. So I'm trying to set up a meeting with me, Trish, and Larry, with Janet Stevens, to get the details on exactly how we can spend the money. And that's where we are at this point.
Oh, I have a question.
Shoot.
As far as the monies that are received, we're not spending any of it right now, right? Because the board is the one that approve it.
Right.
To spend.
Right, but we got to make sure that we spend it correctly.
Correct, and we don't have a plan in place at this point.
No, we do not. We do not, because this is something that just came up.
Right, okay. So I just want to make sure that we're not applying it because I think I heard that it was being applied already to the payroll. And the bookkeeper needs approval from the board before we start getting in trouble because we're only accepting tonight, not to expend at this point, right?
We're just accepting it.
Okay.
Yeah, accept it, put it in the bank, and then we have another meeting to.
Right, okay, so nothing should be applied to payroll at this point?
Right, and if we don't have it all spent by 2026, they will take the balance back.
Right, I understand that, okay.
So I have a question. Spelled out when you have this meeting, whenever this meeting is, because accepting it's easy and if you get till 2026 to spend it, it'll be all spent, I'm sure of that. I would suggest that we put in some type of a board or committee in place to look at areas where this can be best spent.
I nominate Mike to chair that committee.
Wow, I don't know if I really ran up here for the chair, but.
I'm not going to second because he doesn't want to be chair.
I'm joking.
But I, just a suggestion, I think we've got time and I think it would be prudent to have a board put in place to look at places where this could be best used.
I like that.
Probably a good idea.
When do we get the second, when do we get the second half?
Next year.
Next year.
Okay, all right, then we have to 2026.
So there's time, that's my point.
Yeah, 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 no.
There's time and I think it would be something to look at.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Suggestions?
Okay, move to close the public hearing?
Well, I move to accept the, what was the exact number?
Two hundred and.
That's what I said, and so I would move to accept that.
Second.
Roll call vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Kate, yeah?
The only other thing is I'd like to move to perhaps add this to the November 1st, first meeting in November, meeting agenda, to decide what we want to do next. Not decide, but at least keep things moving, yeah.
November 2nd, is that meeting?
November 2nd.
Yep.
If, this is Diane. I have a quick question.
Diane who?
Warren.
What street?
Five Juniper Lane.
Okay, thank you.
So if you move to accept it, that means you're going to end up having another public hearing to expend it, is that a correct statement?
Sounds like it.
Yes.
So is it reasonable to say accept and expend?
We don't have a plan yet.
Just, Nancy, just so you know, I got a text, Kate's in the waiting room.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, so I think the board kind of agrees, we need a detailed plan.
Right.
So it's tough to do that part and yes, we'll probably have to have another public hearing, but.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi Diane.
Kate's in.
You're in outer space Diane.
We've accepted it, right?
Yep.
Okay, move to come out of the public hearing.
Do we need a motion on that? So I'll second if Charlie's.
All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Katie?
What am I motioning, I didn't hear at the beginning?
We're moving to come out of the public hearing.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay.
I'd like to just make a quick ask for RSA 91823 that I am attending virtually as attendance in person is not reasonably practical.
That's what?
Right Diane?
Okay.
So I think you're just reopening the meeting.
What reopen?
Reopening our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, opening up regular meeting at 7:10.
Is this where we seal the minutes?
You know, I don't, I don't think it matters, he did it earlier, but I'll do it again if it, just to make it cleaner. So I would move that the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91832A and C, and I would move to keep the minutes from that meeting confidential until such time as a majority of the board feels the circumstances no longer apply, except for those items that deal with compensation can be released to the bookkeeper.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, fire rescue station, closing out the sprinkler system. That would be you, Mike.
Yeah, there's really not much for me to say on this one. I finished my aspect of work months ago. The state fire marshal commissioned that system, it's up and functional, the only thing you guys were waiting for was the paperwork from the engineers that the board had hired to do the review and oversight. And to my understanding, all that paperwork has been delivered to you folks last week.
Is that SFC?
FSA, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And we have a occupancy permit.
We have one now?
Yep.
Yeah, I think you had that a while ago. I think you had that a couple days after the state fire marshal commissioned the system.
So who issued the occupancy permit?
I did not read it.
Because?
I was just told of it.
I would think it was Ashanti.
Okay, good.
That would be my assumption, I haven't put eyes on it, but.
Me neither. I was, anyways, the chief told me that it was all set.
Okay, I think we should, whoever has that should maybe share that with everybody. Because to me that's, correct me if I'm wrong, because you may want to sit down for this one, Mike, this project did not have its, or had its share of controversy, I guess you'd say.
It has?
It has, yeah. So I personally, this is the last time I want to talk about this project and I know, I know I'm done talking about it as soon as I see an occupancy permit is the way I look at it, so.
So are you saying that we don't pay Mike?
We should pay Mike, but if you're telling me you're sure there's an occupancy permit, I think.
I'm sure of an occupancy.
It sounds like we're done.
Yeah, I, there's been no talk that it wasn't issued.
Yeah.
And I heard that quite a while ago, so, you know, I didn't check with Ashanti, I mean, I'm sure tomorrow or whenever you guys can get a copy of it from him. I would, I can't imagine there'd be any holdup from it.
Yeah.
Right, the only thing that you had left, Mike, was the plumbing, and you took care of that the other day.
I did it yesterday, there's an invoice in there. The plumbers that were supposed to come just were too busy, they never made it, so that was the auto fill. That's up and functional, there's absolutely nothing left for any aspect of the sprinkler system.
Yeah, because I mean, I've, I've seen the report from SFC, but we're all educated that that report is just advisory in nature and that the occupancy has to come from an official, and I think at one point the fire chief was talking about getting a chief from a surrounding town to come in and do it, but I don't know, a lot of things were talked about.
I think that was in, I don't think that was an occupancy.
It was for something else.
Yeah, I think that was way back when, when he was talking about the sprinkler system. And that kind of went to the side once you guys hired FFC, SFC.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think that was the conversations about an outside chief.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, I think you guys got to vote on where the funds will be paid from. Is that not correct, Nancy?
Yes. And there's no monies left in the bond, so it's got to come from the warrant article for the town buildings capital reserve.
So is that true, so the bond has been fully expended, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just pulling up this invoice.
If I might, I got something, I have some information for you.
For me?
For anybody that wants it. I just texted Ashanti and yes, there is a building occupancy permit for the fire station.
Thank you.
Should be a round of applause at some point.
And can I just say something for anyone who's watching, is that SFC did a site visit with the fire marshal present, and they're, they're saying it's, the sprinkler system looks like a go, should be closed out, so they were there, at least anyone didn't know that, which is good news.
So this is speak now or forever hold your peace time, as far as I'm concerned. Anybody? Sorry if I sound a little jaded. The, so it looks like the final bill for Eastern Seaboard is $45,000, right? That's the project?
Forty-six, nine, twenty-five.
Right.
Yeah, that's what the construction management fees in it, in the last, I don't know, eight months of work.
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe we have, what's, what's the, the warrant article move of money, do we have a total as to what's in there?
Off the top of my head, no, I forgot, I didn't grab that, but there's money in it, I talked to Kim today.
Enough to handle this?
Yes, yes.
Diane, the occupancy permit is full occupancy, it's not conditional, right?
That is correct, it's a full occupancy permit.
Double check that they saw the letter, the fire marshal, that every key is crossed and eye is dotted, the sprinkler building's open, it's all allowed, we're good, other than payment.
Yes.
Excellent, just wanted to be.
No, no conditions, right?
Just want to double check.
No, there are no conditions that I know of.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
Okay, I have here a note on this for the forty-six, nine, twenty-five, for the fire rescue station to take out of the capital reserve fund.
Correct.
Yeah, what we're talking about is, when it says capital reserve, we're talking about the sale stuff that got moved via warrant article to the capital reserve fund for buildings and engineering of buildings, blah, 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 so. So is that a motion, Charlie?
Yep.
I'll second his motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Katie?
I think, is Larry on?
Yes, he's there. I see him, I'm down here.
Aye.
There he is.
Okay, thank you to the project manager of Eastern Seaboard for your hard work these past like 10 years, whatever it is.
It seems like forever. Alls I can say is amen, this is over.
It was dog years, but yeah, thank you.
Yeah, 10 dog years.
Yeah, it was, we're proud of the station we have, that's gonna, that's gonna service the people of Newton for a long, long time, so we can't lose sight of, when all this started, it was a hard fought battle to even get what we got. And so there were a lot of people involved from going way back, you know, what, two or three times it was proposed, it failed on the warrant, and to get to this point, nothing happens quickly in a municipality unfortunately, but we can call this one done, so.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll go into the proposed budgets and we'll start off with the conservation commission.
No conservation, that's the only one we haven't received yet.
Say that again, Nancy?
No conservation's the only one we haven't received yet.
Oh.
On tonight.
Okay. So we'll go to planning board.
I couldn't find it, is it being presented? Nancy?
Charlie's getting to his page.
I can't, I don't have it because I don't have the physical book, but it's, right now, I don't see it in the 2022 file yet, the planning board budget, I thought Jim was, where can I find it?
I sent out the links today, if your link isn't working, I can't help you right now with that.
Yeah, there's no link at all on that one.
I'll send you a quick email of it, Kate.
Yes, thank you, great, because I could see, I read all of them, but.
Hey Jim.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
There he is.
Very well, thank you.
Jim, can you give us the rundown maybe?
Sure, I figured I'd wait until Ms. Michaels.
Yeah, it might be a little.
I got, I sent it to you, Kate.
Thank you.
You're the best, Diane.
Thank you.
There we go, I'm just waiting for that.
Kate, do you have the zoning board of adjustment one yet?
Oh, hold on.
She said she can.
If not, I'll send that to you.
I have welfare, I have recreation, I have proposed cable, I have cemetery, no, I need the ZBA, I think, let me look more chance, and ZBA, I need ZBA too, thank you.
All right, I will look for it and email it to you.
Good, and that'll be up to date. Got it. I have plenty more in front of me.
What was yours, sir?
Very good, I mean, would you like me to go line by line?
I don't, I don't think we need to go line by line, but it looks like we're going to have a little more than last year.
Yes, we're looking at an increase of $735.
I don't know if you want to talk about the reasons behind that.
The bulk of it is in the salary line. I mean, really shop pencils were used to create this. As you may know, if you read the report of the planning board last year, last year was a highly extraordinary year as far as the number of applications that were received. This year is, has not slowed down much. Last year we were at like five times the standard number of applications, each application has statutory requirements that have to be satisfied. Back when we were doing five to six applications in a year, as Mr. Melvin probably remembers back in those years, when there would be meetings, when people would show up because you had to have a meeting, and then everybody went home, we're not, you know, the last planning board meeting, they had five public hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the big difference, is it is a major time consumption. So the, as you can see, the salary line has gone up from eighteen-five to twenty thousand.
So we.
Other lines have been adjusted as happens, such as our dues went down, that's the dues we pay to the RPC went down by $160. Little things get adjusted regularly, advertising costs, we realized that we weren't spending quite as much as we were budgeting for, so money has been shifted around to try to cover that increase, but we still ended up $735 in the way of looking for a, an increase.
Can I ask a question, there's no budget for telephone, is that doable?
I can answer that?
Yeah, thanks.
So the telephone is part of the internet, so that call comes out of the cable revolving fund at this point, for the town hall.
Okay, and is legal proven to be a good amount, Jim, given what's been happening?
I'm sorry, Ms. Michaels, I can't quite.
Oh, the legal, I noticed, stayed the same, but so far you think that's, that'll do it?
Our legal fund is at.
Same, four thousand.
Is staying for the same amount.
Okay, that, that should be okay, that's all I wanted to know. Circuit minded, okay, thank you.
I think what she's saying is you don't anticipate having any problems with that amount, right? Because this past year it was exercised quite a bit and you don't, you're reflective of that, in other words.
Exactly, that, that is an amount that we, we carry from year to year, this year, though there is still one more bill to come in this year, we will have used approximately a one quarter of it. And that is for the everyday unusual occurrence that the planning board actually needs a legal opinion drafted. Needless to say, as the board knows, if a court case ensues, this amount of money is going to be gone in the first few days. However, it, it needs to be there, there needs to be some funding for those legal opinions that are necessary. The board, the planning board has a land use lawyer as well as town council. And things, things are sent to the appropriate attorney depending upon how in-depth it is.
Okay, I just thought it would actually, you might raise the legal given what's happened this year, but you know best.
That's one of those that if we don't use it, it sort of rolls over into the next year. But luckily it means no additional.
Right now.
Money needs to be raised by taxes to cover it.
Yeah, I know, all fingers crossed it continues.
So I would like to move to accept the proposed planning board budget as written for inclusion in the proposed budget for next year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And just for those watching at home, oh yeah, Larry's here.
Larry?
Aye.
So just for those watching at home, since that's the first one we've done for the budget season, is what we do is we accept these as a proposed budget to review as a complete budget a few months from now, we didn't just lock in that budget yet, it would be later on, so. For our, as I like to say, our millions of viewers out there who are going to shut, shut this channel off at about 8:08 PM.
Well, Jim, thank you very much.
I think he's got another one.
Oh, you got another one?
I might as well stay here because I.
Should we grab you a seat?
I believe you have the ZBA next.
Yes, sir.
And that's on the agenda next, Jim, so you want to go through that one?
He said, do you want to just go through that one?
Oh, okay, sure. By the way, I gave everybody a copy there.
Yep.
One of my ZBA members did a cost analysis of the past 11 years of ZBA budgets. Please reminding people that 11 years ago, a dollar went a lot further than it does today. Okay, this one's not quite as pretty as the last one. The ZBA, as you can see from the sheet, has gone quite a long time with no increase in its, in its budget. This year for the ZBA is like last year was for the planning board, it's the first year of what appears to be a new cycle. They're, I believe, on their eighth application so far this year, when they normally would have between one and two. Therefore, that many applications requires that much more time to get the paperwork out, to meet all the statutory requirements. As you can see, right at the moment, the year-to-date salary expenses are roughly twice what was budgeted. However, that has covered four times the amount of applications that would normally have been covered. For next year, because of the anticipation, that line item is seeing a major increase. Other things you'll, you'll see because of recently instituted changes at the ZBA, certain other lines have gone down fairly dramatically. The advertising budget is down to the cost of one ad versus enough to cover all the ads for all the applications. Those are now being paid out of, for, out of an escrow account set up on behalf of the ZBA. The legal funds is staying at $1,000. Office supplies actually may go up next year because needless to say, for every application, there are better notices and other things that have to go out, and those all take supplies. Postage has gone down greatly because no longer, that's another cost that is being charged to the applicant on an actual cost basis. actual cost basis, as opposed to coming out of the ZBA budget and then with no way of recouping the money back into the budget. Salary I already, I already covered, the training is remaining the same. There's somebody who is the staff there that has been pushing people to get training. That's always helpful, and however, the last item, which is travel, was capable of being removed because there's more virtual programs available now for training. And by having people do it virtually, the town saves the cost of mileage. And when people are doing training from their home, they're not paying for, for a meal, they get to go to their own refrigerator and feed themselves.
Jim, why do you feel that the, uh, oh, excuse me, I shouldn't have said it that way, why do you feel that the board feels that there's going to be a $5,234 increase in wages?
That is, that is extrapolating out what has been used this year through the end of the year. Right at the moment, we're at a approximately nine plus three month, cost analysis that can be done. Assu- the assumptions have to be made in, when budgeting, that next year is going to be as busy as it is this year. And that is, what you see there as a budget number is probably where we're gonna end up at the, the end of this year.
Looks like you're anticipating a lot of work.
Uh, it, it, quite honestly, it is. We have a very good, um, building inspector, code enforcement inspector at the moment, who, as they catch things, has, you know, they are being directed to both the planning board and quite often to the ZBA, that of the applicants that I've dealt with, several of them have said, well, you know, gee, if you'd picked somebody else for your building inspector, I wouldn't have to come here, cause he didn't let me do it. Our new building inspector doesn't live in town, everybody gets to follow the same rules as it should be. And, you know, people are, are having to come to the ZBA to get the, the required variances in order to do things that quite possibly in the past may have been not necessarily overlooked, but not even known about.
But it looks like to me that you've had the busiest year in history.
Uh, it, it, for the ZBA, it, it has been.
And you only expended 46, 38, 55, and you're looking for 75, 71, which is a variance of 5,200 from the original amount that you had.
I honestly have not been on the ZBA, uh, doing the ZBA administrative assistant position long enough to give you a history. So all I could do, and the ZBA agreed with, with the methodology, was to take the average of what they told me I would be doing for work and extrapolated it out over a year. It's not, I can pretty much say for the most part, it's highly unlikely that it will actually hit that number. But for many years in the past, the ZBA has ended up in the red at the end of the year. With these, with the, with this as the final total, the ZBA should end up like the planning board going, okay, we didn't use all the legal funds, here's the legal funds back, as opposed to saying, which we're in right now, there's, you know, there's no money literally, I think, left in the ZBA budget at this point. However, we still have statutory obligations that have to be met. And there's a lot of paperwork cleanup and what have you that needs to be done that may or may, you know, probably won't be necessary la- next year. However, for very short money, I mean, it looks like a huge percentage because the ZBA budget has gone up, it's over 80%. However, when you actually look at the dollars, it's gone up, you know, $4,272. If you look at the analysis that I passed out, you will see that it has been that same number for the past five years.
I know, uh, for me, I'm at the point where I think this is workable for us to go forward with, you know? As we know, a couple of months from now, we might, you know, take a look further at the budget, but obviously, I think we have what we need as we sit here right now. What's that?
Is that a motion?
I was working my way into it, so I would move to accept the proposed Board of Appeals 2022 budget for inclusion in the overall proposed 2022 budget.
Second.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, I was reading off here, but, yeah.
Seconded by Kate, if you can hear me.
Okay, rule call vote, Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Recreation Commission?
I can do that one. Yeah, the, um, stayed exactly the same because, as I think everybody was aware, this was a gradual reopening. Two years ago, we couldn't do anything, basically. And then this year, we're trying to do more, we did do more, but we didn't do everything necessarily, uh, that we wanted to do, but hopefully that'll happen next year as the COVID restrictions lessen. But that is, uh, kinda where we are at this point.
Just a quick question, who's going to be paying for water testing, so it's, since it's off the budget now?
Well, water testing at 8 Merrimack Road, you're talking about?
No, the Town Beach Water Testing.
The Town Beach Water Test.
Cause I'm just saying that like last year, there was a budget of 180 for the water testing, and the new budget is zero, so I'm just wondering, since Town Beach Water Testing is always a good idea, is it coming out of some other budget?
I don't think so.
So, just, well, we, we might wanna ask, find out more about that to make sure we have the money to do that. If it's, or why isn't it needed? I'd just like to know.
Yeah, I think it, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it was not, it was, it was a, um, what's the word I'm looking for? It, it was not, uh, regulated, so we did.
Well, I know that, I don't, what does that mean? Cause I know there was a day the beach had to close, cause of, you know, duck stuff or whatever.
Yeah.
So, who, who, who did that test? Was it the state?
Probably, I don't, we, nobody here has closed the beach, so.
Oh, there was an alert, but anyway.
Yeah, what I'm saying, Kate, is nobody in the town hall closed the beach. So, if there was any testing done as a result of closing or testing, that would have been the state.
Okay, so. I didn't prove it, but I would want that answered down the road.
Accept the 2022 proposed budget for the Recreation Committee?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Okay, Emergency Management. All right, do you publish, you, you wanna swap over to Pete and get him out of here?
I think Bill Landry would probably like to come.
Or Bill?
Billy, you wanna go first?
Yeah, sure. This is an easy one. Good evening, Bill Landry, Cemetery Trustees. Would you like me just to jump right into this, cause it's, it, there's only five items here, so. All right, um, as you can see, for the year 2022, we are coming in $400 below last year, or this year's budget. In fact, that's $400 lower than the last three years. Reason we're able to do this, we've made some changes with regard to the groundskeeping and landscaping, which is 92% of our budget. We have found that in the fall, we were able to eliminate some mowings and trimmings in there. So what it did is it, uh, left us a variance of $800. Now, other than that, if you take a look at, uh, our supplies, $300 this year, $300 next year, no change there. Where you do see a couple of changes is in repairs. Uh, we had zero last year, this year we've got 300, and that basically relates to the, um, restoring of monuments. Uh, and it's in the older section of Highland, we've got a couple that we're pretty sure are gonna be coming over. In the newer sections, we don't have that issue because we can contact the people who have people buried there. But when you get in the older sections, 50, 75 years ago, it's a little difficult to track down the descendants, so to keep the place looking good, we suck up the charge. So, um, we put that 300 in there. And, um, consulting services went up $100, actually went up 50. We, the consulting services, uh, that we're talking about here are the maps, the three large, three-foot wide, four-foot maps that we do every year. And we do them in November or December at the end of the year. So when we came to the budget, uh, last year, it was $50. When we finally got the bill after spending a few hours because of so many changes we found, that it was 150, so that's what it is for this year. So it ends up that we've got, uh, you know, a $400, um, decrease in the budget. And that'll be for the next three years. It'll stay the same.
Can I ask you why? Just under, why it would stay the same?
The only place that would really make a difference would be the, uh, increase in landscaping. And that is figured in here. We've got a very minimal increase this year from D and J. Absolutely, the low, I, I couldn't believe it, it was so limited. For the entire year, for 2022, all of the services, you know, 13 mowings, seven trimmings, et cetera, et cetera. $360, I think, is all we're going up. That, that's unbelievable. So, that's why, and if anything else, we can kinda go back and forth with, you know?
Okay.
And, um, yeah, so basically, it's 400 bucks. The new budget is 13,750, and it should be that, you know, barring anything really unforeseen, uh, crazy. For the next few years.
Motion to accept the Cemetery Committee's 2022 proposal.
For inclusion in the overall.
Second.
Okay, rule call vote?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay, did you wanna go back to Pete?
What's Pete doing?
Pete's here for the bids.
Yeah, so, so I, I think we need to hear from Larry and Diane. And then, who's doing welfare? Who's doing welfare, Nancy, you?
Um, that one's, um, let me see, hold on. Yeah, the welfare, I, I can speak on that one, it only went up by the pay increase that was given to her this year. That takes effect at the end of this cycle, at the end of this year. So, um, I think everything else is status quo.
What's welfare under? General assistance?
General assistance, yes.
Yeah, cause I, I would make a motion to, um, accept the 2022 proposed welfare budget as written for inclusion.
For inclusion in what?
In the 2022 overall proposed budget.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, rule call vote, Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So the only one we get left on that is the Emergency Management?
We had a cable, Diane's in the cable.
A cable.
Oh, okay, yep, I didn't see that. Cable.
Diane, why don't you, uh, take us away?
Well, ours is level funding, as you can see, so there's no change.
And other, and, um, just for, again, our millions of viewers at home, most of the cable budget is, uh, paid for by the franchise fees, right, from Comcast? So what we're looking at here is salaries for our operators and other expenses, and that's it, basically.
That's correct.
I move to accept the proposed 2022 cable committee budget.
Rule call vote, Katie?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Edmund? Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
It's gonna be wait, welfare.
I think it's just EMD for tonight, right?
Larry, prepared to do this one?
What can Larry tell us about the EMD budget?
Well, I can't switch between screens, I'll lose the meeting, but I know it's below what last year was.
Yeah.
So if you guys can look at it, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Uh.
It's down $900.
Yep, so there's no equipment purchase needed.
Nope.
Okay, what else?
I think travel came out, cause of COVID, there's no traveling.
All the supplies are zero.
I did notice the salary doesn't go up.
Um, I think, I think that's the only line that went up, even though I went down. If you check from last year to this year, I think maybe four or 500.
That's like selling, uh, that was, it's the same.
Okay, the same.
Yeah.
Although, didn't we give a, weren't there two raises?
Yeah.
No, that was one, I believe.
So is that enough? Oh, I see, okay.
Probably one of your lowest budgets in the town, but the department brings the most money into town, so I think it's the deal.
Yeah, really good. So I move to accept the proposed 2020 emergency budget.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I would stay in charge.
Yeah, I think that's it for budgets.
Yep.
Yep.
For tonight. And so the journey begins.
A big one.
Yeah, everyone did great.
Review the bids for the transfer station debris removal.
There was only one bid I saw, is that correct?
Evening, Bud, Pete Gagnon, Transfer Station Manager. Uh, we're doing the brush removal, right, or the, uh?
Yep.
So I, I believe you've all gotten that, um, email I sent to and the, um, uh, the email I received back from the Department Environmental Services. There won't be any issue putting that big pile of ash and compost into our current active compost pile. We won't need to pay money to get rid of that. Probably still gonna need to be sifted. And I, I think that's about it for that.
Sorry, does that mean it would be just the $8,000?
I don't know what rental cost for a sifter is. So, um, it might be a little bit more than that 8,000. They're definitely not gonna be that 26,000.
So wait a minute.
Cause they don't have to load all and dispose the ash.
Correct, yep, that's, uh, most of that's gonna be staying on site, some of the logs might be going.
So wait.
Okay, Pete, what's the, what's the $8,000 for now?
That is for the brush, the logs, and the pallet pile. That's for chipping and hauling.
So 8494, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And that's the only bid we got from the?
Yep, it was only one bid for that.
Is it in your budget? Do you have the money for it?
Uh, no, not this year. We might be able to do a Warren article for that.
But the pile's going to get bigger.
Yeah, we can.
So the price would change.
Yeah, it will, it will. Last, we recorded about eight months ago, it was about 5,000, but when we continue to wait, it would deteriorate, and it does something to their machines, so the price would keep going.
What's the, the, you know, the revolving fund I'm talking about? Not the revolving fund, but?
He has an expendable trust fund.
What's that at these days?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's got a hefty amount in there.
Yeah. So when you say the Warren article, I think what you're saying is we could put it out there for the people to vote as to take the money out of there and apply it?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That'd be next year.
Exactly. Because if, if you add that to your budget for next year, for example, you're going to blow, you know, the entire budget up, so.
And Pete, you're saying the pile behind the brush, we can just bring that over in the compost pile?
Mm-hmm. And you said it might need to be sifted because there is some pieces of burnt logs or?
Oh, there's probably a bunch of that in there.
I think the majority of it won't have an issue, but there is some in there. And it's, that stuff inside is old.
And that's something that you can't deal with right now with your backhoe because the brush pile's in front of it.
And there's no sifter.
Correct.
So the, the issue is, do we have the money to, for this right now? And the answer I'm hearing is no, unfortunately? Is that what I'm hearing, guys?
Nancy, there's no place we can take the money to get that brush taken care of now?
So it doesn't go up in price?
I haven't looked at his budget yet because we haven't got the new one yet. I don't know. We won't know year end until what's being expended.
Because that's my thing is, we should talk about a year end, which isn't that far away.
That's true.
And potentially, what's the word I'm looking for? The year end stuff?
That's a little way too long. Price change or?
Well, that's.
But what am, what am I talking about? At year end, we can spend against the?
Oh, encumber?
Encumber. So we might be able to encumber. You know, we're talking about probably six weeks from now. Maybe the price won't have fluctuated that much. And then if we encumber it, it can be done in a season or more.
But we could be running into snow.
Well, that's what I mean, is we, we encumber it and we pay for it. So when the snow is gone, it's already taken care of.
But that would be next year, right?
Yes.
I would, I would recommend.
Going to have more coming in, it's going to go up.
Oh, yeah.
I would recommend, next time the board is dumping their trash at the transfer station, look down there and see how close that pile is encroaching on the driver's area to get to those containers down there. It's getting close.
Real close.
Do we need to revisit this and do some more investigating? It sounds like until?
Maybe find, find out how long the price is good for, first of all.
Yeah.
And then we can look at the budget and see where we can maybe find some funds.
And that, the fund you were talking about?
That's, that would be a Warren article.
That would be a Warren article.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah. Is there any chance of getting another bid than someone who might be a little less?
I think we went out to bid a couple of times, Diane.
We just got this approved, ProBark, is it?
Yeah, so.
Because it's a smaller job now. Right?
Yeah, if we could call ProBark and just see if they'd hold this bid for 30 days from September 16th, which is, of course.
That's not.
Yeah. They could hold this bid till the 19th if they're comfortable. Our next meeting, October.
Oh, October, yeah.
And, I mean, is the rest of the board okay? Just so we can?
Yeah, that's fine.
Figure something out?
Yeah.
If they're, if they're okay, I mean, they're the only bid, so right now?
Exactly.
Other than going backwards to bid, there's nobody else.
I mean, I would, I would put it a different way. I would say, I would ask them how long the bid would be good for.
Yes, yeah.
Because, because by our next meeting, our next meeting's in 10 minutes, you know what I mean? It's going to feel like?
Yeah.
No time has passed, so.
But at least, you know?
We know something.
Yeah.
Pete, have you looked at your budget at all to see where you could find some time?
That's the next question.
Not recently, no.
Of the world.
I've just been busy down there. We're still short-staffed. It, I might be able to pull some out, but I don't think it's going to be the $8,000 worth.
Yeah, so if, it sounds like the board just wants the answer from ProBark. How long is the bid good until? And then we have this on the next agenda to maybe get your actual budget where it is at that point. Then we can kind of decide. I don't, I don't think we're going to get any more bids.
Yeah, I don't.
Frankly.
How come? I'm just curious, as someone who doesn't know much about this. People don't want to do it?
Yeah, I, I think the other company in the area merged with ProBarks who?
Right, they have. They're the same company. Well, the other, the other.
Go ahead, Kate.
Continental Biomass, I'm just Googling in Newton, do they do that kind of stuff?
The same people.
It's the same people as ProBark?
Continental?
No, they're not, Nancy.
They, but they, CBI makes the stuff to do it. I don't think they do the?
Oh, okay. I'm just looking at junk removal, like, people who do that, seeing if there's anything that got missed.
So all I was going to say, the reason why I don't think we're getting any more bids is because this is what we're running to, into with everything. Like, there's just, people are so busy, you know? And you may get a bid, and the bid might be available in five months, you know, so. But we tried, just so, you know, for our millions of viewers. We put it out there and, and, you know, knocked on some doors, and that's what we got, so.
Pete, do you want to call them?
I will call them, yep.
See if we can get it, make a decision at the next meeting on the 19th?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Can I, can I interject for a second?
Please.
So I just have a quick question to Pete, probably can answer it. Is this appropriate to stop taking in that type of debris so the pile doesn't get bigger?
Oh, God, Diane.
I don't know if that would be a good idea.
No, me neither.
I'm urging people to drop off brush.
I'm in favor of that.
I'll tell you that the number one answer right now is?
Yeah, but so don't we. They don't.
We'd have to revisit that in 2022. We can't really just do it now.
I'll, just for the record, Diane, those things came to mind with me, but I arrived at the, the feeling I can't. Having a very angry response to any change in what we're doing, so.
Yes, I agree with that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think if, if we decided to do some, something proactive like that, you know, so once this is all done, maybe we want to do that. And we can give people notice, like, starting in, you know, Q4 2022 or whatever, we can do that.
All right, so table that one then. Yeah, solid waste removal is next.
All right, solid waste removal. This one's pretty easy. G Mellow is definitely the cheaper option. They're continuing with not charging us rental fees for our 30-yard dumpsters. The, the 40-yard dumpster, I believe, and only one of the comingos, we own the other one. The, the issue I saw, the big issue with waste management, is they would be bringing everything to their Rochester facility. The fuel costs and hauling would be, would be too much for us, I believe.
And some of their cost was double, almost, the other of Mellow.
Mm-hmm. They, they just have so much further to drive. And you'll think of it, we have dumpsters emptied on a Friday, they're into weekend traffic in the summer. It, I don't know how well that would work.
Well, they're putting pressure on people anyway because they didn't get their landfill up north. So.
So do we, can I make a movement, move, move to accept the Mellow bid?
Second.
How would we, or approve Pete's decision to go with Mellow? How do you want me to word it?
I think you did it.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Pete, before we take the vote, what did you say? They're not charging us rent on that compact that it spoke?
Five or six, six currently, 30-yard open-top dumpsters, the 40-yard open-top dumpster, the over-the-wall one, they are not charging us rent for any of those. And I believe the two compacters, the trash compacters, comes out to $3,600 a year with the, I don't know the exact number, but with the waste management, it's, it's way higher than that. Overall, across the board, G Mellow is definitely cheaper.
Yeah, if you look at page nine, I just went off my computer of the comparable prices, Mellow is much more affordable. And they're doing, they're doing a good job, right?
Yeah, so far.
So that would be the three-year with the two-year option?
Yes.
That you would be accepting? Jason's on the phone, on the Zoom meeting, in case you guys have any questions for him.
I'm good.
Does Jason want to say anything? Hold your lantern.
Evening all, Jason Mellow from Mellow disposal. I would just like to thank the town. We've been in town for 18 years now, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with the town and helping you guys out any way that we can.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call vote.
Can I just ask a quick question of Jason? Jason, you mentioned at the last meeting about the chutes?
Yes.
That maybe we could rent them or purchase them? Can you get us price on those?
I certainly can. I was, if you wanted to talk about the compactors, I was going to bring that up. The chutes have deteriorated so bad that if we were to try and replace any of the compactors, or if you were to bring in a new compactor, then the chutes would not be able to withstand being cut and rewelded and reattached to new compactors. So it's imperative that they do get replaced at some point. I would have no problem financing the town and having the chutes built, and I would show you the exact quote as to what it costs, and finance that over an agreed period of time, whatever, basically over the course of the contract. And it was years ago, we got the quote, it was right around $10,000. Right now, the price of steel is so incredibly high that I think it's going to be a little shocking, but I will get a quote for that and let you guys know, and we can discuss it and negotiate it.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Did we finish the?
We just have to roll call vote, the contract.
What's that?
We just have to roll call vote, the motion.
Yeah, roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Can I ask, was Kate's motion to include the three-year with the two-year option?
Was it to accept the bid? Do we have, don't we legally have to know that escape clause? Is it in there? Gang?
Yeah, I think we talked about that last time, but it, we have to, you know, if you could review it just one more time to make sure that we're not?
Yeah.
Because that's just an RSA, that we have to look for that if we're going that, that far.
Great.
Okay.
Cool, thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
An RFP for IT service provider, length of the contract would be 24 months.
So we're looking to see if the board wants us to go out to bid for the DIT.
So you just want to approve the RFP as written?
Yep. Diane's got it ready to go into the newspaper tomorrow if the board's in agreement with it.
Who, who did this? This is awesome. Is this Diane?
Diane did this, yep.
Diane, this is awesome. I've been reading it since you sent it.
I can't find it.
Thank you.
Can you tell me where to find it? Because I can't find it.
We got an email about it the other day.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the email traffic. The, I would move to publish the RFP as written.
There it is.
Sorry, I'm thinking on the fly. I'm going to change it slightly to say, publish the RFP in a local paper and on our website as written.
Second.
Oh, wow, Diane, he's right.
Right?
Holy moly.
Matt, are you considering the local paper?
You should let everyone.
Yeah, yeah. I just left it ambiguous in case we don't meet their deadline or whatever. But it sounds like if it's Tuesday, we can have it in Wednesday, and it'll make it.
I think she's got it all ready to go, right, Diane?
I'm sure, yeah.
So I'm an aye, let's get it going.
Well, before, just so you know, what paper do you want it to go into? If you do the Carriertown News, it won't go in till next week.
Right.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do we just do Carriertown and nothing else?
It depends on how much you want to spend.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious.
We don't have any money, Kate.
I noticed.
Carriertown is free, our website is free.
No, Carriertown is not free.
Well, it's, it's cheap, I guess you'd say.
It's cheaper, correct. It is cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Gee. Review the invoice for the library roof. Bid was $12,000. Invoice is $15,748. Difference of $3,748. And that's because of the fact that they had three coverage on it, and then they had to change the bond board. They had to put bond board back. They couldn't just ply with it because it wouldn't have been level.
And a lot of it was rotted at?
Yeah, I saw the pictures.
Yeah, those pictures were.
Yeah.
That's, that's something you expect.
Yeah, we expected that.
We didn't know there was three layers on there, though. We only thought there was two, but.
So do you need, can I just do the, the amount in difference?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm going to move to pay the difference in the invoice, difference being $3,748.0 to I Roof, money to come from the library.
Yeah, library.
Yeah, library trust.
I think it is. Capital reserves.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. All those in favor? Katie?
Aye.
Larry? Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
And it looks so good now.
Yeah, it does.
It could be featured in Brunch of this old house episode.
And they didn't do a mess neither. They cleaned up real well.
Yeah, true.
Okay, per RSA thirty-one ninety-five, B, to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of twenty-five hundred and sixty dollars from the Old Home Day, from Old Home Day. A, twelve hundred and eighty dollars to the Newton Food Pantry, and B, twelve hundred and eighty for sixty-eight hours of hunger.
So I would move to do so as you've described. And additionally, this is all done through the generosity of the people from the town who donated, participated in the raffles, and perhaps most importantly, all the vendors from this town and surrounding towns that donated things that we could raffle. So as such, we had our most successful money-raising year, so we're able to split it between our two charities.
Second.
That was a long motion.
Yeah.
Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye. Well done, by the way.
Larry? Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Aye.
Okay. School Resource Officer?
I don't think we need that one tonight.
Okay. Okay, J. DRA, revised estimate revenues for MS four-three-four.
This is updating the revenues from what we proposed for this year with any additional monies or reduced monies coming in. And this is used when they set the tax rate. So basically, it is what it is. The board just needs to sign the form so I can submit it to DRA for the tax rate setting.
Okay, this isn't anything we have to vote on?
Excuse me?
Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to sign the revised estimate revenues for the period January first, twenty-twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Okay, roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry? Edmund? Okay, Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Other business?
So I have a quick one for other business. And I think it's time-sensitive, and this is strictly just a record-keeping thing I think we need to do. No need for me to go into much detail on this, other than what's required because I'm concerned about opening up the town to further risk. So we had a complaint come in a few weeks ago to the town administrator. And that complaint came in via email. The person didn't identify themselves, so we can't, I think everybody agrees. If you're going to complain about someone or something, you gotta give us the information. We gotta know how to contact you. We have to know all the details. So we have a form. We've used the form as part of our process. This person didn't respond back, okay? And last Tuesday, I believe Selectman Melvin sent an email to this person that it came from the selectman@newtonnh.net account, which is the email account that represents the board. And Selectman Melvin sent a response that was the following. Concerned, concerned citizens, since there is no response or complaint filed, Board of Selectman Vice Chairman Charles Melvin, Sr. considers this case closed. Now, I know you identified yourself in there, that it was just you. Nancy then sent this to the rest of us. My concern is that we should not be putting a time limit on this type of complaint. I mean, the person can respond or not, but it opens the town up to risk if we're representing some sort of arbitrary time limit. So I just want the.
Well, I was asked by the town administrator, how do I want to handle this? And that's what I did.
Okay. So I just want to put in the minutes tonight that, and at least I think the rest of the board can tell me, maybe they knew this email was going out. I did not know. But I want to put it in the minutes that this was not a board decision to put this deadline on this person?
Yeah, it wasn't a vote.
Okay, so.
Or it was.
The thing I sent earlier with Kalia, can we talk about that real quick?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm done.
Are you okay with that, Charlie?
What?
The Kalia thing I sent earlier?
Yeah.
For the memo, are you okay if I talk about that?
That's a different topic, though, right?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I know. This, I just want to make sure.
I would just like to state that this person did reach back to me with two or three emails. Today I received, or yesterday I received a request to send the complaint form again. Evidently, there was an issue with the form that was sent, so I did send that out. But I guess I'm looking for direction from the board because I'm supposed to be dealing with these. And, and, you know, Charlie's correct. I, I spoke to a.
Nancy, can I stop here for one minute? Trish McCarthy is trying to get in and she can't get in.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, is this something we can talk about in public?
Probably should have pulled off right now.
Oh, sure. Yeah, okay.
I'm going to go to Kalia.
Over there. Hold on. House doesn't want to cooperate. There we go. Can't get my mouse. Oh, here we go. I got it. Okay. So anyway, I need direction. I know this is a board thing. I feel like, um, you know, I, I went on legal advice to be able to go to the Vice Chairman to help me handle this. But I think I need to be able to share it with the whole board, not, you know, and Charlie did come back and say for me to forward it to the board. But I just, I'm not sure that I, well, let's just leave it at that.
I would just say if somebody's going to fill out the form or at least give us the info that's on the form, then you send it to the board and the board can figure it out after that.
Okay.
You know, my, my thing right now, as I said, is if, if you don't know who it is and how to contact them, and if they're a real person or not, there's nothing we can do at this point, other than just give them the form and let them either reply or not.
And that's basically what we did.
Yeah, but then we can't, my concern with risk to the town is, is telling somebody, sorry, it's closed. Putting an arbitrary deadline, so that's why I bring it up.
So what are you supposed to do? Wait, let her deal with it for a year?
Well, she's not dealing with it.
Nothing's happening.
Nothing's happening.
I know, but I'm just saying, you came to me and said to me, Charlie, you're the Vice Chairman, deal with this. So I dealt, I dealt with it.
Right.
I think.
Other than that, I could have told you, don't do nothing and leave it alone for a year, and then you would have been bugged and bugged and bugged. And then you would have kept coming after me. What are you going to do?
I think everyone's intentions are really good here, and I think it just, the legal brain here is saying in the future, like, for example, the letter went out before, I know I, it went out before I read it or said yes to it, that just to be safe, we have to make sure everyone okays the sending of the letter before it's sent. Or I don't know if that requires a vote. That's, I think that's it. I don't think we need to dwell on it now.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we can move on from this subject tonight, as long as.
Yeah.
You know, I just wanted that in the minute so it's clear if anybody makes a issue of it later, so.
All right, may I have the floor for?
Kalia?
Yes, please.
Please, go.
So earlier today, unfortunately, it was a little late to put it on the agenda. Myself and the police chief talked about, well, yesterday he sent this to me, about Kalia, which is the certification process. Now that we have everything in order with a, let me just make sure I'm writing it right. We have everything in order with a administrator for it, which is, you know, in the police department and the police chief have all their training needed to go further, go forth with Kalia. They've given us a sum of how much it's going to cost to get the certification. As I said to the board, the certification is, is really good to put the town in, you know, twenty-twenty-one and beyond. And so, yeah, I sent this document today to see what the board thought. And the chief would like to move as quickly as we can because just to kind of get the process started is a long process. So, yeah.
So I, I think, you know, this is one of the goals we had for our police department this year, or to start this year. So I think we need to start the ball rolling, but it's, from speaking with the chief, I think he said his budget could handle.
Yes, so the chief.
This year, but.
Yes, the chief was able to cut some costs this year to be able to handle the beginning of the, and again, we have different options of how to pay it. Did you get a copy of it, Charlie?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we had three different options of how to pay it. So he has it for this year, it'd just be next year and the year after that we'd have to.
Put it in his budget.
Yeah. So again, I'm, I'm all for Kalia because it really helps us as a town move forward to twenty-twenty-one.
And it's, it's really, for those who don't know, it's, it's risk mitigation. You know, it's, it's something our insurance company likes to see, and stuff like that, so.
So would I read the, if I made a motion, would I just read this?
That's what I would do, yeah.
All right, so I have a motion to allow the chief to reach an agreement with Kalia and Power DMS for three installment payments of two thousand, nine hundred dollars effective today, October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
You just probably want to read the numbers against the payments.
What do you mean?
The, the amounts.
Oh, the amount, oh, yeah, yeah. All right, I see what you're saying. With year one, being the policy document and training management of two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And in year one, a one-time implementation onboarding fee of five hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Year two would cover policy document and training management, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. And year three, policy document and training management, five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And we would like to go with the option of three installment payments of two thousand, nine hundred dollars. And as I said, the chief does have the money for this year.
And what about the other two years? Do we know yet?
It'd be two thousand, nine hundred each year.
Well, wait, I thought it says year two is four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine.
So the total brings you to, right? Did I do that right?
Two installment plans. Yeah, I see what you're saying, twenty-nine hundred. Yeah, that makes sense. Just it looks weird on the paper.
Yeah, it does. On paper, even when he sent this to me, I had to ask if this is correct, but yeah.
Okay, I get it. So it's twenty-nine hundred every year.
Nancy, that makes sense, the motion? Okay.
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or the public, or?
Was it, so, so that was a motion, so I'll second? I think nobody seconded, right?
Nope. Like I said, just to explain it again to the public, Kalia, and as Matt said, helps our loss mitigation with insurance companies, and it helps us bring this department to, you know, twenty-twenty-one and beyond.
Okay, Edmund. It says here, please be aware that other fees will be associated with the process, such as annual conferences, travel, and our assessment team visiting us. Do you know how much money that is?
That is on a, you know, kind of like we do with some trainings, that's on a case-by-case basis of, of the cost of that.
Yeah, but if they're, if they're going to, I don't know, let's say fly out to Chicago.
Yeah.
You know, there's a hotel room for two people.
Yeah.
There's paychecks for two people.
Yeah.
I think we ought to know what that is.
Right, we're not signing up for it right now, though.
No, but if we approve it, we're approving everything.
Well, we're approving the payments, but if we, if we don't want to do this, then we should vote no on all of this, right? But if we're moving forward to do this, we need to start in this way. And then as the conferences come up, we can do that on a case-by-case basis. And if, if we're getting people to come in here and like we did the first time we did this, and, and, and what's the, what do they call the, the people who come in from Kalia and?
Assessment team.
The assessment team, there might be charges there. But we're not, we're not signing up for those charges tonight, where we're starting the process to, of our application, I guess is what I'm saying.
So once they get this motion, then they'll prepare something for the board to sign with the plan that we're going with?
Yes, that's what I understand. Yeah, because the chief's gonna, if, if, you know, we were going to be able to talk about it tonight, chief's going to call them tomorrow, once he, you know.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote. Katie?
I'm an aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Does somebody have the?
Approval, approval of minutes?
No, the other business for the manifest?
Oh, yes.
Oh, manifest? Yep, I've got it right here.
I can do this real quick if you want.
Sign manifest?
Charlie, I'm going to have something on the other business before we close out.
Oh, okay.
Do you want the manifest?
Do you want it now?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So the comment made earlier about a town administrator on the public hearing or receiving the two hundred and fifteen, or fifty thousand, whatever it was, that not to be used on payroll is, where am I going to get the money to pay the employee to continue to work on this? Or we could just give the money back because I'm not playing this game with the town? And if Trish is online, she can beep in. Trish, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know. I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, this is just beginning stages for this whole process. We have four years to come up with a plan. We will be completing a report, which is due March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. I've spoken to all the department heads, and everybody has said they'll pitch in and give me ideas and help. But the bottom line is, so far, for those that have participated in this, which I think is just Kim and myself, all the admin work for everything we're doing here completely can come out of this two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that we already have. That, they did that on purpose, including the webinars, that seventy dollars that, I don't know if that ever got paid for me to take the class. All of that is completely covered, and they did that on purpose. And I didn't hear, again, what was said, and I apologize, I'm dealing with, my daughter-in-law died this morning, so I, I'm sorry that I didn't get on earlier. But the other part of this is payroll is also covered for first responders. There's premium pay, there's additional things starting from March twenty-first of this year through till twenty-twenty-four, and it's going to be spent by twenty-twenty-six. So again, I'm, I'm not sure who made any comments, but clearly I can explain it because whoever said whatever they said, you know, wasn't on the call. So there are specific things for first responders and admin coverage that is completely covered in addition to many, many other things, as long as it's COVID-related. We're working on HEPA filters for the town, and again, we don't know if this is going to be covered yet, and we have to come up with the beginning. So I've already met with quite a few people, well, not quite a few people, but a few people to do with these. They're called Monitor Molecule, and they trap ninety-nine percent of the COVID virus. I have done measurements from, for every town office, every town building, the library, the Butler Building, the fire station, the police station, the transfer station. And I talked to Bill Landry about the museum. So, and this is just the beginning. I've talked to Tina about what she needs. We've got election items. I briefly went over a little bit with Mary Jo, but that was before all this happened with my family. So this is the beginning stages. So again, this is out there for all of us to talk to. But please, if you have questions, call me, and if we want to get together a little committee, that's fine. But let's give correct information because the public is listening to this. And they need to understand that we've been awarded this to help the public, to help the town prevent any spread of any kind of virus whatsoever and help for first responders as they continue to respond to these calls because, as you know, our numbers have been going up. So I just wanted to say that. It's completely covered, all admin costs are covered, whether it's me or somebody else. And certainly, a committee would be a great idea. And the few people that I've talked about on the committee, Mike Jewitt, even Mike Pivera, and I think he said something about a committee, the fire chief, everybody that I've talked to said, yep, absolutely, they'll help out. Mike Jewitt even said we could have meetings at the PD. So let me just toss that out there, so you understand what's going on.
This is Kate here. I'm confused because this all sounds good. I think everyone's in favor of this. What happened that I'm, what did I miss in this meeting that happened?
I don't know, because I just logged on myself, Kate. I, I wanted to make sure that payroll, pay, not miscellaneous payroll, but payroll to do with this, these monies.
Yeah.
Is completely covered. And they did that on purpose because this is, and I think I explained it earlier to Nancy today. This is such a, a new thing for everything, and everything that the state does and the feds do. You know, they do it and then they think about it. God help me for saying that. And so now, we, we have these classes and these webinars to figure out how to do it. And one of the things they were really clear on is because it's a, I guess I'm going to call it a moving target, they needed to cover the people that were working on reporting on these funds, coming up with estimates, going out for bid. Everything we do has to follow our bid policy. So it's not like any one person, the committee, me, or anybody can go out and start. can go out and start buying stuff. We have to follow whatever our town procedures are. And everything, obviously, is going to come to the board of selection. So again, payroll, can payroll be covered? No, only admin can be covered, COVID-19 can be covered, and any first responders can be covered, which includes EMS, fire department, police department. And they will only cover, starting from, again, March, I want to say it's 21st of this year, moving forward. So we can't go back. They can't get reimbursed for payment like last year. If you remember, they got stipends. So they can't double-dip, they can't get more if maybe another stipend was offered. So the rules and the U.S. Treasury minis, pages and pages and pages of guidance, and they're trying to do the best to help us out. So I just wanted to clarify, whoever said payroll, yes, payroll's not covered unless it's admin for this or it's first responders, then their payroll can be covered.
I, I agree with Kate. I think I missed something. I don't...
I think it was my question, and I'm sorry if it came across the wrong way. My question was to the board that I heard it was being applied to payroll. And does the board have to vote to be able to release any of the funds? Right now, we're just getting the money, we're accepting the money. We're not spending the money. But I wondered, because I heard, I spoke with the bookkeeper today, and I heard that something was being asked to be applied to the payroll. I need to know, she needs to know. If, it just can't happen. The board has to give us direction. We're not in charge of the money. We just need direction from the board, that's all.
And obviously, everything, I'm sorry if I'm jumping in, Matt, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to kind of say, kind of exactly what Trish was saying. We're just starting, right?
Yes.
And we got to kind of figure out the rules of the road.
Yep.
And I think...
And kind of like, so Nancy, think about, and that's a good way to describe your question. So one of the ways that's, and every town is a little different. We have to do what the U.S. Treasury and what Gopher is saying is permissible. But some people, what they're doing for admin, and Kim and I very briefly talked about it way in the beginning. We said, you know, "We're going to have to figure this out as we go along." But, so, so the, and maybe you might be looking at, and you got manifest there. I don't know if it's payroll or ECA, I can't remember. But if you look at my pay sheets, I've separated out, if it's COVID-19, which is separate from this, because I thought, "I got to start keeping track of this ARPA so that people know what I'm, what kind of time is being put into that." That money, right now, is being paid for wherever, I don't know, a crystal ball, maybe. But what will have to happen is, and again, it'll have to go before, say, the board, just like we want to expend funds, say, from the trust fund, and the board has to approve it. We'll think about this money that is not in a special trust account. And I actually asked that specific question. Should it be in a different account? And the state said, "No, it's apt." And actually, I talked to legal, is it Steve Buckley? He said, "No, it does not have to be in a separate account." Because I thought, gee, it's supposed to be able to gain interest. And if we don't use the full $515,000, we have to give back what we don't use, except for the interest. So I said, "So we don't need a separate account?" He said, "Nope, your bookkeeper will just keep track of where it is. When you want to pay out of it, she know, you're going to do like a memo, the board of selection will approve it, and it gets paid out of that account, which right now is not any kind of a trust fund." But like Nancy said to me earlier today, you know, at the end of the year, I'm not quite sure how we have to account for this. Does it need to be in an account that is going to roll over? And that's a question that we're asking the U.S. Treasury and Gopher. So again, this is just the beginning. We're just dipping our feet in the water here. And as things go on and I start getting more information, I'll absolutely share it with Diane, and she can send it out to all of you so that it makes sense. And when we have these meetings, we can ask questions, the public can ask questions. And the idea is, we need to be really transparent. The public, you know, may, they may have ideas. So it gives them an opportunity to ask us questions. And if we don't know the answers, then that's another thing for our next meeting.
So would it, would it be within the realm of possibilities for the next meeting, two weeks from tonight, whatever, I think it's two weeks, right? To have, you know, after Trish has met with Kim and Nancy and kind of do our first introductory, what's our next steps going to be? You know, this is what we need to do to move forward type stuff. Is that what we want to do?
Yes, the 19th.
Is that too soon?
It's a beginning, that's for sure.
And by, you guys, excuse me, both of the, Trisha, Larry, you've been wonderful getting funds for the town. We appreciate it, we absolutely support it. We just need to learn more.
Yep. And again, there's going to be things out there, and, you know, I've talked about, you know, you know, Mike Pevero and Mike Jewitt, we talked about the parking lot because now we use the parking lot at the safety complex for elections. So there's certain things that could prevent COVID issues that we may have to address there. So there's another example, I think I talked to Matt after the last meeting. If during COVID, we have realized that some of our lands, whether it's our park, our conservation lands, have been overused, therefore damaged, these funds can be used for that. So this is a beginning, and I said this at one of the meetings when we, when we got, when we first got these funds, you know, start thinking about what you guys think you want to use it for, and then let's us pursue it and see if it's possible. They may say, "Go pound sand," or they might say, "Hey, this is a good idea." So again, it's just the beginning, and we certainly can, you know, discuss it at your next meeting and come up with another plan if you want.
That works for me.
Yeah. Can I ask, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, Trish, I guess it would be geared to you. So you are the administrator of this, we'll say, fund. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So then...
I'm the main contact, is the backup contact.
Okay, so you're the contact, and you're the administrator, is that correct?
The administrator is, I guess you could call me the administrator, but it's really, they, when they say administration, it's anyone who works on it is part of the administration of the paperwork.
Okay. So my question, I guess, is, do we need a, a new position, job description, whatever, for this particular fund disbursement?
I wouldn't think so. This is what I've been doing right along when I've been doing grants.
Right, and you, and this is okay with, because this is a special fund, so I don't want us to get in trouble and say, "Oh, you can't have so-and-so doing it unless she's appointed to do that."
Nobody has said anything about that. And again, these are still the beginning stages.
Yep.
Larry signed the paperwork, I put Nancy in as the backup. So if I can't be reached, they're going to reach out to Nancy. And again, this is all still the very, very beginning. They just this week sent us our ID. So it's, things move kind of slow when you get at this level.
Well, I would just check with them to see if you need to be officially elected or appointed to it. That's all.
Yep, I, I agree with you. I understand what you're saying, but so far, nobody has said that in all these meetings. Yep.
Trish, no, no one has to get appointed. All the funds come to the whole state, to the whole country, to the EMD office or the mayor's office. And that's the department that's in charge. So it's usually the workers that are already in place, which would be myself and you.
Yep. That's how I understood it.
Not a bad question, but...
I have one quick question. I know you said they have to be used or they get returned. When, what is, when do they have to be used by?
So we have to use it by 2024, the end of 2024? Yeah, so we've got a few years.
Trish, Trish, you got it wrong. You got it wrong.
Okay.
You have to have your plans in place by 2024. And 2026, you have to have the money spent.
Actually, like, the first reported plans are due, they just changed this last week, March 31st of next year. But we don't have to start using it. We can if, if we come up with something and they feel, we all feel, okay, this makes sense, it's easy to understand, this is strictly for COVID, so this makes sense. So the plan, which is a moving target, kind of like Governor Sununu said, you know, this is a moving target. It, it changes all the time. So we can start coming up with this plan, but we don't have to spend it, like Charlie just said.
Right.
We can spend it before then, but we don't have to spend it before then.
Like, for example, the HEPA filters for the rooms, that can be expended even before this year's over, is that true?
Yes, as long, and that's one of those questions that I've asked them. Okay, is this considered responding to preventing COVID from spreading? One would think so, but they're, you know, as the attorneys in the room know, no offense there, that, you know, words are everything. So will a HEPA filter prevent spread? Who knows? So this is just one thing that a lot of the towns are working on, assuming that it makes sense that it would be covered. We don't know that for sure, but we're going to ask those questions, obviously, and certainly before we ask you to approve any funds.
Cool, thank you.
Sure.
Good to read the manifests? Time for the manifests?
Yep, I got it.
You want them?
Signed manifest dated October 5th, 2021 in the amount of $85,362.30.
Second.
Thirty-two cents. Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Signed cable revolving manifest dated October 5th, 2021 in the amount of $6,016.73.
Second.
Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry? Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I'm not, Charlie.
Okay. Signed emergency management revolving fund manifest in the amount of $2,637.44.
Second.
Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Signed inspector's fee revolving fund manifest in the amount of $9,218.30.
Second.
Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Signed police detail revolving fund manifest in the amount of $44,695.90.
Second. Sorry.
Roll call vote. Katie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.